Everybody's so quiet, I guess it's time to get started. Let's call the meeting to order and we'll ask Pastor Ken Jackson, Christian Life Church minister, to give us invocation and please remain standing for the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness and your faithfulness toward your exhausts. First 10 to 2, we pray for all men, especially for those in places of poverty. We do ask you to bless those in civil authority and spiritual authority across our land. Especially here tonight, we pray for our city government. Lord, that you would impart your wisdom to our city council members, our mayor, our chief of police, our city departments all across our city. Lord, that they would ask and seek your spiritual wisdom and understanding, carry out their responsibilities. We thank you for good government in our city. In Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carr, Mr. Knight.
President.
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 First of all, I would just like to make a statement. First of all, we want to offer our prayers to everything that has happened. And I got permission from the necessary people in charge to offer our condolences to the family. I asked especially permission since I've known the Massa family since approximately 1960. I grew up with them and I wanted to at least show my friendship to the family, let them know that, you know, condolences were sent out to the family, at least from the Knight family and also the city council. We want them to know that, you know, we're asking them to keep God lifted up in their prayers, kept beyond them. And I hope y'all accept it. And we also let them know when I said that, that the Alabama Bureau of Investigation is in charge of this. You know, the city of Uphaula cannot investigate the city of Uphaula. We know this. Once the investigation is complete by the Alabama Bureau of Investigation, the results will be turned over to the attorney general. He in turn will turn it over to the mayor. He in turn will release it to us. But I also asked a special permission for him to sit down and talk with the family to see if they had any question that they need to know, to let them know everything is in order and everything is legal. So with that in mind, I hope that y'all accept that. Yes, Mr. Carr?
Oh, Lord, Mr. Knight, thank you, Mr. Knight. I met with the Mass and I left in there with one understanding, Proverbs, Silvus chapter 14, "For wisdom is the principle of things; therefore wisdom with all things get an understanding." And when I left there, that's what I tried to tell them, with all things, we will get understanding that is out of our hands and the law be in our hands. And I left with a prayer and I thank you very much.
Okay. Is that it? There was one more thing and then we get started. Fellow council members, with tonight's absence of council president, I am the presiding officer and I would like to request a motion and to amend the tonight's agenda to include Resolution 78-2013 as accepting the negotiated proposal of the CBG Engineering and Associate Corporation and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to this proposal. I need a mo-- if you are in agreement with this, I need a motion. Have a second.
I make a motion to settle 8-2013.
Okay. All right, it's been properly motioned and settled. Add it to the agenda for tonight. And we'd like to have a roll call on that, please.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Now, down to the business. I need a-- what we got first? We got roll call, honor and recognition. Do we have any honor and recognition that need to be presented before the council?
John?
Yes, sir.
Let me, uh, let me give one of, uh, this is recognition because it's one of our officers, Lieutenant Captain Lawson, is back on duty after some pretty serious surgery. Most men wouldn't be back.
Okay.
And what he went through and I just want to recognize you and our prayers have been with him and, uh, and we're glad to have you back, uh, Captain. I just want to say something about that because he's a good man and, uh, and we've been worried, we've been worried about you, you know, and we've been praying for you, so, uh, we're glad to have you back. Thank you. Thank you for what you do and, uh, I told you earlier, I said, you know, he looks good, so, uh, keep praying for him and, uh, do a little respect here.
Thank you. Okay, now we need an approval of the regular agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right, it's been properly motioned. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been my proper motion and second to approve the agenda for October 21st, 2013. All in favor, let it be known by the word "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, next we have on the agenda, uh, the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we got, uh, three items. You've had time to read your, uh, agenda. You got, uh, a, uh, city council meeting of October the 7th, 2013. Also, you got a claim docket October the 16th, 2013 in an amount of $10,206.26. And C, the approval of the prepaid claim docket dated September 2013 in the amount of $777,908.36. With that in mind, shall we have a motion and approve?
I make a motion and the agenda be approved.
All right, it's been properly motioned.
Second.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by the word "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay? Mayor? It's low as yours. You want it now?
Uh, I'll do it, I'll have you.
Oh, okay. Do we have any visitors that would like to address the council? Yes, sir. You can go ahead and speak in the business's place, so go ahead and say your say. Yes, sir, come on.
It was the craziest thing.
See, my wife's, uh, flinched. It's okay. The one time I could have used a heads up, I--
Bam. I was putting on lipstick.
The good news is, Alpha has the largest customer service team in Alabama, so you'll be dealing with people here, not all over the country.
Oh, sorry.
For a plan built just for you, contact Keith Bryan in Uphaula.
I want to thank you again for giving the opportunity to speak to you on behalf of Uphaula City Schools and all those employees and our students. I'm going to be brief, to the point and professional. And anything I say is not personal, it's your business.
Okay.
If you don't know me, then hopefully if you get to know me, you know that's just because I'm an operator. Let me start out by saying I've had several conversations with some parents who would email me and talk to me about their concerns over the budget that's coming up and possible loss of funding for the city. I shared with several of these parents who emailed that monies that had been spent for fiscal year 2013 that ended September 30th, 2013. And Mr. Knight, you, I was not here. I was at a conference, but you made reference to a letter which we do have and that letter was found.
Right.
Dated October 2nd, 2012. And you said it makes you feel better that we got that notification.
Right.
And was sent on conditional appropriations for the fiscal year 2013. By the time we get this letter, we've already had two public budget hearings publicly. We've already presented the budget to the board, approved by the board, sent to the State Department of Education, approved by the State Department of Education prior to and not later than September 15th of 2013. So that's just a way for future knowledge that school funding and budgeting by law has to be done. So I know it made you feel better that it went out, but it didn't make me feel any better that we got it after the fiscal year had already been addressed, the people had been hired, the money had been appropriated in our system. I talked to the parents about 2014. We budgeted all that starting in April and May of 2013. It too was presented to public hearings, passed by the board, sent to the State Department of Education and approved. I know we hadn't received a letter yet and, of course, Angie keeps me knowledgeable and the reason is I don't think y'all passed the budget yet.
No.
Right, so, you know, I know I'm going to get one, but it's going to be after the fact. So I know it's going to make you feel better, but it's not going to make me feel any better. So I just want to share that with you. So in the future, what we're dealing with. I want to let you know about, you know, ECS. We're known for programs such as music and art, music and art in our schools. It happens every year. Band, extracurricular activities. Well, these are subject to reductions and losses for the school year 2014 and '15 next year. So I've got to look ahead to 2015, come this spring, to see if we're going to cut back on supplements to a lot of our programs, our extracurricular supplements. I could give no money to the library this year. I could give, I might pull back all my money from athletics, from music, from art. So those monies that I have appropriated for this fiscal year to help those programs in those schools will have to be pulled back. So I can't let that go forward. I'm concerned, and there again, nothing's personal here, it's all professional, that comments have been made and I'm concerned that the comments might, you know, we're partners with the city.
Right.
I'm not going out and saying anything negative because I'm not going to bite the hand that feeds me to a degree. But comments such as, that are made publicly or privately, that, you know, when you have a, if $180,000 hurts you with a $20 million budget, then you need to do a better job of tightening your belt like the city. But I know y'all are struggling right now to tighten your belt. I'm not sure what's going on prior to this year of tightening your belt, but we by law have to do this every year. So I'm not here to say anything negative about what y'all appropriated for parks and rec, or law enforcement, or maintenance, or highways. I think it's all warranted. It makes us proud to be in the city. But if we start, if the educational system starts to deteriorate in the city of Uphaula, you know, it's going to hurt. I mean, it's just going to hurt. That's just, that's the way I can say it. We do have a big budget, $20 million. Eighty-five percent was told goes to salary and benefits. That's just a standard across the board for any public educational system. It's a big budget for a big employee. If not one of the biggest, we're certainly up in a top rung of one of the biggest employees here in the city of Uphaula. And hopefully something that you can continue to be proud of. That leaves about 2.5 million to run our school system. Utilities, instructional fee money, capital projects match, which we spoke about, $120,000 that we have to match to the state. Utilities I mentioned, you know, substitute teachers, textbooks. We get $84,000, $84,297 from the State Department of Education, from the legislature for textbooks. Last year alone, my first year, not this year, with the adoption of the math textbooks, it was a quarter of a million dollars. Now, $84 million, that might help you out, but it's not going to go a long way. So if you've ever bought textbooks for your children or grandchildren, you understand that a chemistry book is quite expensive. So that's one thing. Alabama Reading Initiative funds for our academic coaches to help at risk and to help for our instructional purposes has been cut by $8,500. Title funding has been cut by $88,000. Special education, IDEA, has been cut by $13,000. Transportation, which is vital to Uphaula City Schools. Our children depend on these buses. We have a thousand kids riding buses, more than they've ever had according to Mr. Warner. We're $30,000 lighter because of the funding in the state legislature, yet we pull $127,000 from our general fund to maintain our transportation system. So it just shows you the inequity in funding coming from the state. We could do away with transportation, as some systems are doing, but I don't think we would do that. So that's just another area I want you to think about. The $360,000, which it amounts to, 180 from this past fiscal year and 180 possibly from FY14 fiscal year, that 360,000 possibly at one time hit, you know, that's about 13% of our non-fixed assets. So that's a big chunk of change. Comment was made that we made it through proration. Somebody had told me that. We did. We had one year where I told you there was three different prorations declared on public education throughout the state, through the state. But we didn't have to deal, my understanding, I wasn't here. You didn't have to deal with the loss of $180,000, you know, or $360,000 to go along with that proration. Just a few more that I'm going to sit down. Pre-K, our city prides itself on pre-K. I mean, it's a bell cow for the state of Alabama. And right now we have seven pre-K units, teachers. Three of those units are paid for by the Office of School Readiness Funds, through a grant. Two of them are paid for through title money. The last two are paid for through foundation, which as you'll learn more about how schools are funded, we receive foundation units based on our increase of students. Generally, those foundation units are for kindergarten through second grade in the primary school. But you could choose to use them any way you want in that race, in that setting. So we increase our pre-K by two, so it gives us seven. We're serving about 120 pre-K children aged four. Head start has lost funding. There's three and four-year-olds waiting in line to get in our pre-K. We've got a waiting list of about 18. Little scholars has gone. There's nothing we can do there. If next year, those foundation units are pulled for pre-K and put somewhere else in that primary school, that reduces our pre-K. So you got more four-year-olds that aren't going to have an opportunity. It could go to five classes instead of seven. But I'd like to relocate pre-K and go to 10 classes because we have a need. The city has a need. And statistics, and I'm talking to educators and people who have educators in the family, show that if these children get in pre-K, that they're going to be more successful. And that just means more success for the city of Uphaula. One more point. Another comment was, of course, y'all helped set us apart from other school systems with your funding. Another comment was that other like systems do without, and are good systems. Well, do we just want to run with the pack or do we want to lead the pack? I feel like we need to get off the porch and we need to start leading instead of running in place. We're a good system. I mean, I'm the new kid on the block, it's my watch. I don't think we're great. My terms of great, but I know we have the potential to get there. But with a loss of funding, it's going to put us back. I told you last week, you can't, or two weeks ago, you can't run a school system on stolen knives and bare steers. You just can't do it. I think you understand it, just like running a city.
Yeah.
But your funding is what helps set us apart. So all I'm going to leave you with is, I ask again for the students and teachers of Uphaula City Schools, please, vote, vote your conscience. Do not cut our appropriation. In my opinion, you're playing a dangerous shell game with the futures of our children. I want to thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Anyone else? Okay. Next on the, next thing on the agenda is, uh, resolution and ordinance. First one up is Resolution 79-2013. That's the approval of the adoption of FY214. That's the budget. Mayor, did you want to comment or two on the budget?
Sure, the car race by name is lucky. And the reason that calls me lucky is because I got all of this money. And the reason I got all of this money is because I sells me gold on Dale Road.
Sell your gold on Dale Road. Sell your gold on Dale Road. Mr. Pond buys gold on Dale Road. Mr. Pond buys gold on Dale Road. Sell your gold on Dale Road. Sell your gold on Dale Road.
Before we, before we hit it?
Oh, yeah. It is hard to understand, you know, what you're saying. It's the same way in, in, you know, we live and die by the gas distribution that we get from South East Gas. The budget this year is $1.3 million. $1.5 million. Five hundred thousand dollars in. So, so, uh, this year we're budgeting $800,000. Next year. And we haven't, we, you know, of course, this is my first year as mayor, just like your first year as superintendent. We, you know, we have budgeted the same appropriation for this year. Now, that $180,000 has always been conditional based on, you know, what we get at the end of the year. So we have budgeted the same amount. I guess it's been distorted amount. I live for $5,000. My understanding is I did, you know, can't conditional about four years ago. Yeah, and I, and I was listening, but, uh, and, you know, we had a work session the other night and, uh, a lot of educators were here and I explained to them, I, you know, you know, it's, uh, we're insane. We, I mean, you know, we, we want to help schools all we can. We're, we're going to have to look at other revenue sources. We've got to get less dependent on this gas distribution because it fluctuates so much. It'd be nice to have this note, note, we did this budget, exactly how much money we're going to have to operate on next year. But we have to wait until the end of the year to even see if we're going to get what we think. So $500,000, $5,000. As I explained to the educators the other night, uh, you know, the city department here, most of them are here, they cut our budget this year. They did without, a lot of times, $4 million. I mean, I mean, we, we, we cut, we cut that money out. And you can't keep it down a little too long before you really have a thought. We've got, we've got needs and all of those causes that we've got to address. Can't let, you know, can't, you know, four hours, we start and keep, you know, four hours and reasons, such as that. So, so we got to look at other revenue sources. Not do that. Or if that's what you're saying. And, uh, you know, I, I'll be, we can admit that extra $180,000. We're going to make it conditional because, you know, we can't give what we want to have. I explained that night. And if you got a budget over here, decide to budget, you know, you can't give it if you don't have it. So, so, uh--
And I think it's also, personally, I like your message.
So, uh, we got to run the city and we got other schools. We both present.
And I think one thing important that came out of the work session also was, in January, we're going to go back and review the budget, find out where we are. And then we're going--
We still have to learn things about, about messaging, things like that. You know, this is going to be a breathing, living, breathing, uh, document of our budget. So, uh, you know, it's, it's tough now everywhere. My goal is to get us off of this dependence on this gas issue. Because it's really a windfall that the city is. And, uh, it's fluctuating, we're doing from $400,000 to $20 million. I mean, so it's a big fluctuation and there's a lot of variables involved, gas prices, weather, usage. And it's smaller. Hopefully next year, you know, I hate to wish for a cold, cold winter so people have more gas. You know, it's, it helps the citizens when it's, you know, going, you know, getting more gas. So we got, we got to eat ourselves off of that. We're, we're very sensitive to, to, to the schools. Do a good job and, and we want to be there. Do a good job. We want to, uh, and, you know. So, so like I said, this is, you know, this is not written in some. We got to go after other, you know, we got to go after other sources written. We got to find. So, so, uh, do what I like to do and I feel good. I love inviting councilmen anytime, talk to them, meet them, process. Ask questions. I'd love for you to come visit our school. You know, that's why I'm here twice a month, because I want to learn more about the process. I want to be involved with the city. And I'll take care of them all. I mean, I have been to some of the schools. I have not been to one before, but I, you know, it's been a real busy year this first year. We've got a lot of challenges here in the city. But, you know, that's part of it. I picked it up from the office. It's going to work out. But, uh, we're pulling out of, uh, just, just so we can have a balanced budget, we're pulling out of city reserves and we've got some other obligations that we have to do. My, the hospital. And we want to be a dollar obligation payer, thanks to your side of the hospital. The hospital is very important to, to our community, just like the city. So, so we, we, uh, like I said, this is a, you know, this is a living, breathing budget that now that we've got to work on and improve and, uh, and, uh, that's the shit that we, we, uh, we, we, we're not going to do this. I live as an educator also, so, uh, so, uh, I would ask you though, I mean, and sense of that, but I don't care how, you know, everybody in sense of that. So, uh, that's really all I have, Johnny.
Okay, okay. Now, it was to my understanding that each, each department of each head, like Bob for the education, Chief for the police, all y'all met and got together on these figures.
Exactly.
Okay. Just want that.
The process, uh, we, I sat down with every department head.
That's why I mean.
And, uh, we went through the, the joint ideas. We went, we went through this budget line for line. Like, you know, and hoping in that line, something that we need, something that we cut out, line for line. We cut $100,000 out of this year. This, this thing that we need right now, I mean, you know, what is ready? We got five of them. We need a roof for now. We got, we got, I, 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 it's, it's a lot. That's a small meeting, but there's a, there's a lot of meetings in the city. Infrastructure, uh, they're having this.
a, there's a lot of meetings in the city, infrastructure, uh, that have, this, that, you know, you got, you got, you got, you got this, uh...
Okay, I, I feel better now that, knowing that each department head know about this budget, before we make the move tonight, so with that in mind, we've got something, any councilman have anything else?
I'd like to make a motion when I approve the mayor's budget.
I, I want to say this too, about the department heads, I appreciate their attitudes, uh, uh, in working, I mean, they, they loved to work to, to help, uh, cut this budget, uh, and, uh, I'm just, I'm, I'm real proud of each and every one of them, you know, they, they all have jobs, we have services that we have to, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm on mission, you know, and, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm real, I'm real proud of what they've done, and also, also Joy, Joy, special heart, she, she's a, she's a worrier, I tell her, she's a worrier, I, I have to constantly, uh, constantly comfort her, that, you know, we're gonna work hard to, uh, uh, my goal would be to, number one, get this gas money on the front side of the budget, so, so you're budgeting what you know you already have, not what you think they're gonna give. And then initially, we ourselves off of that gas money, uh, to the point where that should be money that we can use to, 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 and, and things that we can do, like food in the city, like parks and things like that, that's where that money really should be used, but, you know, that's how...
Unstable funding?
Unstable funding?
Unstable? Yeah, that, that should be used to support the city?
Well, no, I mean, not, not necessarily, I mean, but, 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 we have, we never gonna get something like that, you know, so, so, uh, it's not, you know, maybe a lot, maybe a little, but, uh, it's unstable funding, it's sure not the way I want to run the city.
Okay, with, with, with that in mind, with that said, we have a motion on the floor, uh, on Resolution 79-2013, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. All, he wrote on that.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Next we have on the agenda is, uh, Resolution, uh, 78-2013, and I think you wanted to...
Yeah.
Something to say on that, please.
Um, I know the A-trip funding is a, is a great opportunity for the city to pave the streets and update infrastructure. Um, as the treasurer of the city, and I guess kind of like the mayor says, I'm a worrier, I have a couple of concerns or comments that I just want to make. Um, the engineering services right now are not budgeted, and second of all, right now, there's no financial plan in place to pay the match that will come due, I believe, later in 2014. And as the treasurer, I just want to, to make that known, or, or reemphasize that. I know it's y'all's decision, and, but I wanted to say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good. Any other councilman have anything to like, say?
Well, well, I guess I will bring up that, I understand your concern, but back in March, we met with the Aldott people and actually asked the county to come out of the ramp that we would pick up their share. So, with, it may not be exactly in place, but we have been planning on it for the past seven months, and we understand that there's shortcomings, but we are also looking at ways to increase that as well, to be able to take care of this.
Realistic, realistic, the raise that we had, probably about 15, we actually, we, we, we actually saw, and so...
We did raise absent sales tax to cover that.
That'd be, be my, could, come in here, and I could...
It would, very much so, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay?
Motion and a second. Now, Will, do a roll call.
Uh, let's have a motion and a second on, uh, Resolution 78-2013.
I make a motion at 78-2013, you're the doctor.
Alright, been properly motioned.
Second.
Has been properly motioned and second. All in favor, let, let have a roll call on that.
Yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Any unfinished business we need to talk about? Okay, we're down to committee reports, finance.
Uh, I think we covered most of it.
Okay. Uh, education, library and zone, and Mr. Powell not here, uh, park recreation in Apple, Mr. Cox?
No report.
No report. Uh, street sanitation and cemetery, no report. But Miss Sher, I promise you this, next council meeting, I want you up here with some recognition, okay? Thank you, Mr.... And, uh, we don't have anything for police, fire and rescue, you see in your, uh, package, you have some information items from your police department, uh, your monthly report, and, uh, public works, as well as fire department, you have your reading in your agenda, please take time to read it, and, uh, I want to thank you, Chief, for doing your, taking the time, right, uh, Darrell, all of you for doing that, really thank you, ask you to keep up the good work. Alright, anything else, come forward, council.
I think we're adjourned.
Is that alright? It's been properly moved, we're adjourned, thank you.
Welcome to the Walmart Vision Center. Quality eye care by a team of professionals, and as close as your local Walmart Super Center here in Euphala. Eye exams are done right, and we accept most vision players. Try Care, Alabama and Georgia Medicaid. Dr. Clark is a certified professional in primary eye care. The Vision Center in Walmart of Euphala, with everyday low prices.